Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Marin County and the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce. I am Becky Bingay, your moderator this evening. With me are League members Elaine Bia Geni, our timekeeper, Edie Butori, our Zoom support leader, and Nancy Weber, our question sorter, along with the technical support team at the Community Media Center of Marin, CMCM. Bertha Campos and Damaris Caro are providing Spanish language interpretation. Tonight, we are fortunate to have Bertha Campos and Damaris Caro with us as your interpreters. You will soon hear from the seven candidates running for three seats on the Fairfax Town Council. But first, Bertha will tell you how you may listen to this forum in Spanish.
Hola, buenas noches y bienvenidos al foro que presenta los candidatos que se postulan para la junta de supervisores del condado de Marin, Distrito 2. Este foro se presenta en inglés con interpretación simultánea en español. Si desea escuchar el foro en español, haga clic en el icono del globo de interpretación en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si está en un dispositivo inteligente celular o tableta, o sin ver, no ve el globo, busque el menú de tres puntitos y elija interpretación de idiomas. Luego seleccione español. Finalmente, todos, por favor, pongan en silencio el audio original. Esta opción la pueden encontrar en el mismo icono del globito. Haga un clic en silenciar el audio original para escuchar solo español y no los dos idiomas al mismo tiempo.
Thank you. Please bear with us for a few seconds while we set up the Spanish audio. Now, I am delighted to introduce Nina Kim, Director of the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Linda. As the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce, we believe that supporting our local businesses is a key to creating a vibrant and thriving community. We're very proud to co-host and put on beloved town events like the picnic, the Halloween parade, and the winter market, bringing everyone together. And while the current political climate has made it more challenging to find common ground, we hope events like these will help to make a more peaceful and cooperative future as we work together for the good of Fairfax. So now I'd like to hand it off to the moderator, Becky, with the League of Women Voters.
You're on mute.
So thank you. Once again, welcome to this forum. I'm Becky Bingay, your moderator for the evening. And I guess all of us forget to unmute ourselves at times. Sorry about that. Anyway, I wanted to again welcome you here. And I want to thank the Fairfax Chamber for co-hosting this with us. I also want to recognize League members that are with us. Elaine Bia Geni, our timekeeper, Edie Butori, our Zoom support leader, and Nancy Weber, our question sorter, along with the technical support team at the Community Media Center of Marin, CMCM. Bertha Campos, as you already know and were introduced to, and Damaris Caro are providing our Spanish language interpretation. So tonight, we're going to hear from seven candidates running for three seats on the Fairfax Town Council. This legislative body is responsible for setting town policy, including the adoption of ordinances, land use regulations, and the annual town operating and capital improvement budget. The Marin League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocate for issues. We never endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Moderating in candidate forums is an important part of our work. This evening's forum is being simulcast on Marin TV Channel 30, facilitated through our partnership with CMCM. It is being recorded and will be available at our website, MarinLWV.org. It will be rebroadcast on Marin TV, Channel 30. There are seven candidates running for three seats on Town Council. Bruce Ackerman, Barbara Kohler, Chance Cutrano, Frank Edgar, Michael Guerin-Gelly, Doug Kelly, and Cindy Swift. All candidates have agreed to the guidelines and time limits for this forum. Each candidate is invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, they will each have one minute to answer each question. To be fair, I will rotate the order and all candidates will be asked the same questions. For opening statements, we will begin with Bruce.
You're on mute, Bruce.
My name is Bruce Ackerman. I've been on the Town Council for seven years. And prior to that, two years on the Planning Commission. Prior to that, 10 years on the General Plan Advisory Committee. So I've learned a bit about planning in Fairfax and also founded our Climate Action Committee. The world is far different than it was decades ago. And being a small town council or being a member of our mighty staff is a lot more complex than it used to be. But there are opportunities for our community to lead, and indeed, it always has. I have an engineering background, so I work a lot in climate resilience and energy issues. For example, I've been working on upgrading our pavilion so that it will stay powered when the grid is down and it can serve as a community resilience center there. And I work on the MCE Technical Committee, the mosquito board, the flood zone, all requiring technical understanding. So I bring that to the council as well as what I've learned about planning and my love of Fairfax. In a way, what this election is about is whether we and our wonderful community can come together with goodwill and openness and creativity. Fairfax is proud of its tradition of doing just that, and I want to continue. Pass ranker and opposition to join in making things work for all of us. So thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next up is Barbara.
Okay, good evening. I'm honored to have served on the Fairfax Town Council for 11 years and as mayor in 2015, 2019, and now in 2024. I was appointed in May 2013, elected in November 2013, and re-elected in 2017 and 2020. I also served on several important boards and commissions for our town. I had many endorsements, notably Senator Mike McGuire, Supervisor Katie Rice, the Marin IJ, Marin Democrats and California Democrats, Sierra Club, North Bay Labor Council, Marin Professional Firefighters, Local 1775, Ross Valley Firefighters, Fairfax Police Officers Association, all the Fairfax Council members, 350 Marin, Marin Women's Political Action Committee, Marin Railtors, and more. Breaking news, today we closed escrow on the wall property, 100 acres of open space for our town. I've been working hard on this for more than a year with Chance Cutrano as my primary council partner. I believe my experience serves our town well. I'm a scientist with bachelor's and master's degrees in biological sciences. I have a long-term commitment to protection of public health and the environment with more than 20 years running statewide hazards, waysite cleanup, and permitting for Cal EPA and five years enforcing air quality regs for the Bay Area Air District. For eight years, I served as the administrator of a significant climate change program for the 35 California air districts. And as a consultant, I also worked on environmental justice project for Cal EPA and the Aliso Canyon Nothing Links, which led to the evacuation of about 8,000 families. I have an excellent track record of accomplishments on the council. My primary issues focus are living within our budget and providing quality public services, housing for affordability, social justice and equity, disaster prep, maintaining and improving our infrastructure and protecting our environment. Thank you.
Barbara, and Chance, if you would please unmute, and you can go next.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chance Cutrano. I am a council member, former mayor, environmental nonprofit director here in Fairfax, and I'm a 31-year-old candidate for reelection to the Fairfax Town Council. Serving Fairfax these past four years has been an absolute honor. I've worked really hard to turn possibilities into realities by harnessing the power of partnership and collaboration to realize a safer and more equitable Fairfax for everyone. I've delivered on key commitments to my voters from 2020 by hiring our first Public Works Director in over a decade and developing a pavement improvement plan. We've obtained grants for bicycle and pedestrian safety, secured $4 million for affordable housing preservation, strengthened tenant protections to keep our neighbors in their homes, enhanced emergency preparedness with three firefighters on every fire engine, guided Marin's $74 million emergency radio system upgrade, and initiated the campaign to preserve the 100-acre wall property as permanent public open space. Also developed community resources that y'all might love, like our outdoor dining program, our skate park for our kiddos, and public art projects around town. I've been endorsed by the Marin Democratic Party, Sierra Club, Marin Professional Firefighters, North Bay Labor Council, former mayors Renee Goddard, Stephanie Hellman, Larry Bragnan, the entire Fairfax Town Council, all of my colleagues, every single Marin County Board of Supervisors member, including Supervisor Rice, as well as Congressman Jared Huffman and Senate Pro Tem Mike McGuire as well. I'm really excited to chat about the issues and all of the incredible opportunities before us with you all tonight. Thanks for having me. You're on mute, Becky.
And I will unmute too. So Frank, you're up next. Please unmute.
Thank you. Fairfax stands at a crucial juncture, and my experience and vision can help guide our town towards a bright future. My campaign is really about being for the people, combining decades of experience with a fresh vision to address the challenges we face with the state and preserve what makes Fairfax special. My dedication to preserving Fairfax's small-town charm while championing progressive policies is well-known. I either authored or led the effort to adopt literally hundreds of Fairfax's ordinance to protect our town and her residents. I did not need a consultant, a town manager, or town attorney to tell me what needed to be done. Because of my background and education, I was on top of what was going on in town. I wrote laws like the ban on pesticides on the commons, height limits, protecting open space in ridgeline scenic corridors, and living wage law. I battled the effort to consolidate the Fairfax Police Department multiple times. I served as mayor seven times, always treating everyone that came before us, Brendan Foalike, with the utmost respect. I was California's first coastal commissioner, serving from 1972 to 1981. A board of control member for the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, the founding director for the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, and a co-founder of Friends of the Eel River. As the current president of the North Coast Rivers Alliance, I, along with Dallas Goldtooth from the Indigenous Survival Network, fought the Keystone XL Pipeline through the Ninth Circuit Court, and we beat former President Trump in court. We stopped the Keystone and made TransCanada remove the Keystone XL Pipeline they had already put in the ground in Montana. Public safety is a huge issue in Fairfax. I fought two of the largest wildland fires in Sonoma County as a volunteer, the Creighton Ridge and Hamley Fires. My law enforcement major at Central was a J.C., provided me with good insight as to best police practices. As a math major at USF, I honed my budgeting and financing skills. It's a stop, stop.
Thank you, Frank. And Mike, you're already unmuted, and you are next.
I'm ready to go. You may have seen my signs around town. It's called "Mikey Likes Fairfax." And how can I say that? I could say it because I was born here in 1957. I could say it because I grew up at the Deer Park Villa, waiting on tables and cooking in the kitchen and waiting on the citizens of our town as they came in to see the family. I started my first business when I was 21 years old. I started other businesses in town: Pizzeria, Max of 19, Mario's Cafe. All told, I have about 500 staff members in total in my companies. So I have practical experience, I will say, and I think I'm going to proudly say it. I'm not a professional politician. I'm just like you. I'm just trying to love this town, give back to this town, preserve our town character. I always say to people, because I've been walking a lot, I'm very accessible. I ask people, I want to listen to them, I want to respect what they say to me. I want to make sure they're part of the process. And one of the things that they care the most about is that they move to Fairfax the way it looks because of guys like myself and guys like Frank Edgar. And they're going to be shocked to see seven-story buildings, and they're going to be shocked to see rent control, which you can determine yourself at the ballot box. And there's all kinds of things the professional politicians that are on the council now want to do with you. It's a social experiment. Don't let it happen. Mikey likes Fairfax. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next up is Doug.
Good evening, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for bringing this on. It's a great educational forum for the public. I am relatively new to Fairfax, but it's also true that for the last 28 years, I've lived no more than 1.3 miles from Fairfax City Hall, Town Hall. I coached our kids in Bambino Baseball. I coached for eight years in West Marin and San Sommo Baseball. I started out as a San Sommo Town Councillor, served on the San Sommo Park and Rec, served on the San Sommo Town Council, served on the Marin Emergency Radio Authority, the Ross Valley Police and Fire. And I'm a business person. I've done business here in Fairfax for 34 years. I sold and sell and support restaurant technology. I owned my own company until December 2020, when we sold to a large company. I now work for them, and I still work in the Fairfax area. Still have clients here. This is an interesting, challenging time. I have some experience that I'd like to offer to this town. I'm a very willing and open person. Similar to Frank, I'm always respectful to everybody who comes to talk to us. I currently serve as your elected representative to the Ross Valley Sanitary District, and I'm appointed by them to the Central Marin Sanitation Authority. I'm also a director of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers. We reach out to agencies before tax measures get on the bill, on the ballot. We try and make them fair, make sure that they have a sunset, make sure that they're needed, equitable taxes. We endorse some, and we oppose some. I look forward to having the opportunity to serve the residents of Fairfax and keeping this hippy-dippy town just that, a cool little hippy-dippy town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. And finally, we'll hear from Cindy with her opening statement. Cindy, please unmute. Thank you.
Hello. Fairfax is a small town, and we face many challenges that we cannot face successfully if we do not restore the community's faith and trust in our local government leaders. We need to focus on the core priorities our community asks for, including maintaining and improving our infrastructure, most often heard are complaints about the conditions of our roads. We have a well-used neighborhood park that now would also serve as a temporary refuge area if needed during an evacuation that hasn't had its water fountain replaced in several years. Public safety. Despite voices raised by community members and business owners, nothing has been done to try and alleviate the issues of riding e-bikes and other devices on our downtown sidewalks. Disaster preparedness, neighborhood resiliency, including our business community. We had our first town-wide evacuation drill this Saturday with approximately 200 people coming to the event. And participating neighborhood resilience, evacuation concerns were voiced repeatedly to those of us that were manning the Firewise Neighborhoods table. Fiscal responsibility and budget transparency to ensure we budget and fund our town's needs. And our Town Council needs to be more effective and proactive in bringing all voices to the table to ensure that everyone's input and concerns are heard in order to make informed and balanced decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And now for the questions. The first question is, Measure I proposes amendments to the town's just cause eviction and rent stabilization ordinances. What are your views on these changes, and how do you think they will impact residents and landlords in Fairfax? And we'll begin the answers with Barbara.
So I oppose Measure I. It's critical to have just cause eviction with rent control. Without just cause combined with rent control, landlords can simply evict without cause anyone. If Measure I is successful, not only would overturn the ordinances that were passed in November 2022 and amended to carve out some things that made things more amenable for mom and pops, but there would be no ability to change or to go into rent control without another vote of the people. If Measure I is defeated, the council would have the ability to fine-tune ordinances over time to make them more workable for mom and pops and others in our town. I feel that, you know, I have significant concerns about Measure I. It's very draconian and would go back to state law as well as something that I brought back in 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next is Chance, if you would unmute. Thank you.
Yes. I urge all voters in Fairfax to oppose Measure I, which would repeal local rent control and tenant protections in our beloved town. This is an issue that's really about preserving the diversity and the vibrancy, inclusivity of the Fairfax that we know and love. It's about keeping our neighbors in their homes. Fairfax's current rent control laws, which we've had on the books for multiple years, the sky hasn't fallen. What they do is that they both guarantee landlords a fair rate of return, and they help working families stay in their homes. And they actually don't impact homeowners. So we carefully crafted these with all of the possible constraints in mind. They basically just prevent our neighbors from being priced out, and they include safeguards against arbitrary evictions for seniors, disabled residents, teachers, and families with school-aged children. 75% of our renters in Fairfax are low-income. Over a third make between 0 and 30% of the area median income. And we don't want to see these neighbors priced out of our community or pushed into homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you, Chance. Next is Frank. Please unmute yourself.
I'm voting yes on Measure I. The extreme rent control laws were written by the head of the Berkeley Rent Control Board. Drive over to Berkeley sometime and see what has happened there. High rises everywhere. I have always supported tenants. In fact, I wrote a Fairfax law that stopped evictions by a speculator trying to convert Piper Court Apartments to condos. Fairfax voted it down. 27 units. We kept it as apartments, rental units. He sued me personally for seven figures. The Town Council met in closed session. They said, Frank, you wrote that ordinance. You're going to have to defend yourself. The town's not going to defend you. I knew a deputy attorney general who took up my case all the way through appeals to the California Supreme Court. The Supreme Court let the First District Court of Appeal decision stand. We created a new case law on Fairfax to protect affordable housing by general cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. And Mike, would you please unmute? You are next.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm also voting yes on Measure I. Measure I was actually put on the ballot by the will of the people, because the council would not listen to those folks. It was put on by a minority of people who wanted from Berkeley to help further their cause. This is not, one of the reasons why I'm running, and by the way, I was on the council 28 years ago for two terms. I came back because the town is divided, but it doesn't need to be. We're all in this together. The renters and the property owners earn it together. The rising costs of property, the rising cost of fire insurance, the rising cost of property taxes and everything else. These are issues that need to be dealt with, and the town should not be out there involved in the rental business whatsoever. So I hope everyone agrees and votes yes on Measure I. We can do better than that, much better. Better solutions for renters, better solutions for property owners. Protect your property rights, protect your renters' rights as well.
Thank you, Mike. And next up is Doug.
Thank you very much. I'm voting yes on I, and I urge the voters to do the same. We have a very strong rent control measure in the state of California. In general, rent control laws result in less housing, not more. It squeezes the property owners, and so the upkeep on those rental units is not as much as it could have been. Again, as a member of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, we're seeing all of these taxes. This is a tax tsunami this November. If you tax the homeowner, the landlord, and you don't give them the opportunity to recoup that, they're just going to get out of the business, and this has been proven over and over again. It's unfair to the landlords, and it's not good for the renters. I urge you to vote yes on I. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. And next is Cindy. Please unmute.
I support, excuse me, I support Measure I. The council did not contact all the stakeholders and bring them to the table to discuss the town's then-current rental-related ordinances, hear input and concerns to determine if there were changes that could be made that would be fair, equitable, and sustainable before they crafted any ordinances. Two-thirds of our landlords are of the mom-and-pop variety, many of which are older and use the income to supplement their fixed incomes, but not all. As I remember a young family coming to the Planning Commission who bought a property and wanted to remodel the home to add an ADU so they could rent it out to supplement their housing costs. 75% of the CPI is the rent ceiling. And to request an increase above that due to increased costs, a landlord would have to pay a fee of $1,000. I believe that due to the council's actions, we have lost a number of affordable rental units. And if Measure I passes, we have two years to start the process over if there's the will and interest to do the work that should have been done at the beginning to create something that is fair and equitable and sustainable for all.
Thank you, Cindy. And now Bruce.
Well, I'm voting no on Measure I. I believe that it's, that's so we can be creative and make this work for our town, which it does require looking at. I'm learning a lot as I walk door-to-door. I've learned a lot talking with both renters and housing providers. Our family has been renters in this town, and we're now housing providers in this town, so I certainly see it from both sides. The polarization that has occurred, even as the council made amendments to the ordinances to certainly improve them, and those were voted on unanimously by our council, we were still facing divisiveness about whether we should even make amendments from the people who are supporting Measure I. So under these circumstances, we can't have conversations about this. So that's what I'm looking for, is a community conversation after this election about how we can make it work for our town. This is a very important issue for many, many people. So no on Measure I. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Bruce. So question two is, do you believe rent stabilization is a long-term solution for Fairfax's housing challenges? Or do you have other plans to ensure housing affordability? So this question will begin with Chance.
Thank you so much for this question. I feel like one of the things we talk about when we talk about rent stabilization is that it's not the solution to creating more affordable housing. And that's actually not what the intention of it is. It's an anti-displacement ordinance, right? It's trying to help create manageable rent increases for the residents that are already here, our neighbors, and our families and our friends. But it's just one part of an overarching strategy. It's not a silver bullet. It is just a short-term stopgap as we try to roll out some of the other strategies. So we talk about these as the three Ps. Tenant protections are just that, the first P, protection. But then we have housing preservation, actually removing some housing from the speculative market, like I did when I helped secure that $4.2 million to preserve Sherwood Oaks, our largest apartment complex. Our largest apartment complex is permanent affordable housing. It's sixty percent of the area median income. It was huge and it brought mid-pen to Marin County. The third P is production and that's something that the council's been working on with our housing element, which was recently certified by the state. So we have to do all three.
Thank you, Chance. Next up is Frank.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you. Historically, Fairfax was affordable. And what we're seeing is we created such a wonderful little town that now everyone wants to come here and it's driving prices up. We do not need these extreme rent control laws in order to protect tenants in our town. The Fairfax Town Council did not have any written complaints about evictions or, or, or radical increased rents. Before they actually adopted those ordinance, there were nothing in writing. It was a Public Records Act request and there were none. We need to involve our, our mom-pop housing providers and how, and how we set these, these, these red, red control laws. You know, Fairfax rent control law was on a ballot some years ago and it did not pass in Fairfax. Um, I don't know how, how it's going to fare this time, but the fact is, uh, we could, we could, we could, we could help our tenants without these stiff, stiff laws. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Mike, you're up next.
If the government would stop raising property taxes, if the government was not dependent on rising property values, rents wouldn't be as high. The fact is, it's a, it's a double-edged sword. I've born and raised here. I find it ridiculous how high prices are. My own kids can't really live here. Um, the point being is, is that we can't control that. But I have alternative ideas. One of the things I'm in charge of in my, my, um, my companies as the president and CEO of my companies is ideas and we, we have alternative ideas that we can use to look for affordable housing, better ways to do that. I look at the Marin Town and Country Club as a great area to do that in, not seven-story buildings. But the government wants you, the property owner, to lower your rent, but they don't want to lower your bills. That's the problem.
Okay, thank you. Doug, you're up next.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, as a board director at the Ross Valley Sanitary District, we've made it less, uh, onerous, uh, to add ADUs and, um, extra rooms to your homes. So that's one way, uh, we've lowered the cost. I think we need to help, uh, lower building costs. You know, one of the things about California is we seem to make it very hard to, to build things. Um, you know, I, I'd be happy here in Fairfax to make it easier, working with the building, uh, department to, uh, help move forward ADUs and other small units. Seven-story buildings have no place in Fairfax. And moreover, you know, the, the question is, how much do we want to grow? You know, seventy-four hundred people, one road in, one road out. You, you know, I don't think we want to add twelve-hundred more people. I don't think that's good for the town. I don't think it's good for the community and, um, I'm not in favor of, of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. And Cindy, you're next.
So I don't think rent stabilization helps affordability. Um, as we talked about Measure I, I've gone around and talked to a lot of the mom and pop landlords and a lot of them have taken their units, whether it's a duplex, an ADU, a room in a house, off the market because they're afraid of the current ordinances and the impact on them. So I don't think rent stabilization helps affordability, at least within what our ordinances state. I do think we need to do things like work with, um, you know, mid-pen and, and nonprofits like that where we can to, um, make apartments and other units affordable. But I also believe in ADUs and JADUs and trying to work on affordable, compatible housing where it fits our community.
Thank you. And Bruce, you're next.
Yes, building and preserving affordable housing, and this is particularly affordable housing, is, is a key part. And that, your question, I believe, was not just about the rental protections, but about the overall picture. So clearly people cannot find housing. There's a shortage of it. They can't afford it. And if they're renting, they don't have stability. Um, one of the things that we could have put into the housing element, but we weren't able to, was the Marin Town and Country Club. A lot of people said, and I would agree, that's a great location, but that's an example of a ballot measure that has backed us into a corner that we haven't gotten out of. Without another ballot measure, which I would invite somebody to bring up, we have Marin Town and Country Club zoned for recreational and by an earlier ballot measure and we can't get out of that. So we just need to be careful how we lock ourselves into things and look for creative solutions to preserve and, and build more affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. And Barbara.
Yeah, I want to say, who do you think is, uh, waiting you, waiting on you in the restaurants? Where are those people going to live? Um, some of us were fortunate and bought many years ago. I couldn't afford a rental at this point. So along with preserving housing, and we did that in 2015 when I was mayor of Piper Court, uh, deed restricting it. Let's talk about the housing element and what we did. I signed off it as, as mayor in March, HCD certified in April. We did things like inclusionary zoning, which requires affordable housing. Um, we also did tiny homes. We rezoned most of our commercial properties in the downtown for workforce housing overlay, which allows housing by right and it doesn't change the picture. We also did, uh, put in a very large development in School Street Plaza, which is a underutilized property. And that will provide various affordable housing. We focused most of our work away from the hills and we need to provide housing for people who want to live and work here, not just for those of us that were fortunate enough to come here many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So moving on to question three, what initiatives would you propose to address homelessness in Fairfax? And how would you balance support for homeless residents with the needs and concerns of the broader community? And Frank will start with you.
Interesting. You know, Fairfax needs to take a look at some of the options here. The, the Fairfax Town Park ha- has a, there's a law that says in Fairfax, you can't be in the park after dark without a permit from the town clerk. There's also a ban on smoking in Town Park. So we're talking about the children's playground. Clearly it's not the place to be putting urban campers. Fairfax needs to find some other place for them, be it townie home, tiny homes or some other units at some location. Uh, Fairfax needs to take, take a look and find out where the, the, uh, uh, the urban campers are from. If they're from Fairfax and we're going to have to find some housing for them. If they're not from Fairfax, perhaps we can help them return to the communities they came from before they ended up in Fairfax. You know, there are options here. We, we do not have to turn the children's playground into a, a place for urban campers. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. And Mike, you're next.
I'm next. Okay. Our job is to protect the residents of Fairfax, the safety of our children, our elderly and quite frankly, all of us. Um, the safety in our public parks, the Little League fields and throughout our town, that's our priority, priority. That's our job. Um, our citizens, citizens deserve clean and safe parks, sidewalks, streets, recreational facilities. Basically enough is enough. It's actually one of the things I hear the most out there. People are upset about what's happening. The folks living in our parks and streets, they need real compassion. Um, letting them take over our street and parks defies common sense. Uh, I dealt with, many of us have in the community have dealt with mental illness of people we know. A lot of these folks are mentally ill. The resources are at Sacramento, billions of dollars that are being misused. When visitors come into San Francisco, the streets get clean. So we have to relocate the homeless, um, the encampments. We have to take them out. We have to bring the homeless up to Sacramento where they can get real help. And, um, and, and, you know, we have a lot of compassion for people, but it's not compassion to let them live on the streets. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, Doug.
Well, uh, Mike's right. There's a lot of mental illness, uh, here and this has got to be a community project. Um, you know, it, it really needs a direction from the state and a different direction from the state because the direction the state's been doing has been all wrong, which is to have people, uh, live on the streets. You know, it's interesting that, um, one of the most, uh, vocal advocates for, um, adding large homes and, and large buildings and apartments, uh, in small communities is Scott Weiner of San Francisco. But funny enough, Scott, uh, San Francisco has added practically no population since nineteen fifty. Um, we have to have the ability to give medication to the people who are mentally ill. We do have that right here in the county of Marin, um, to help them in a compassionate way. Uh, we need to work together with the, uh, uh, board of supervisors because there's problems in all the communities here in Marin. We need to work together. I would not put anybody out without giving them somewhere to go. But if people don't want to take help, then we've got to, we've got to work in a different direction and be less compassionate. Sorry, but that's just true.
Thank you. And Cindy? Go ahead and unmute.
We need to marry public safety and compassion here. We're a small community and we can't solve this issue on our own. So we need to continue to work with the county um, and other agencies. One of the things that occurred as a part of community, um, involvement was moving the portable showers from a church where they were not that utilized. And it was moved to the parking lot at our Fairfax library. So, which is more accessible to folks and those, um, that facility provides outreach as well. So that's, um, some of what working together in the broader Fairfax community can do in this area.
Thank you. Bruce, please unmute.
Yes, so, um, indeed, building, helping people to find housing is being done. We've had several excellent presentations that you can find in our archives of council meetings, uh, from state organizations and nonprofits who are doing excellent work one by one with homeless people, getting them into permanent shelter. Now, some, some people don't want to go into a shelter. Some of those same people have mental illness. They have substance abuse problems. They have physical illnesses. Uh, so this is, it's really a very difficult problem and, uh, simply sweeping people out is just phenomenally difficult and risky as well as not being compassionate. We, we would be sued, the town would be liable and that our neighbors would be the ones that received those people. So it's a problem. The police are currently watching very carefully. They know everybody in the encampment and they intervene when necessary. And we just keep trying to deal with the problem.
Thank you, Bruce. And Barbara.
Yeah, I find the lack of humanity about homeless people really disturbing. They are our neighbors. In Fairfax, we have the small encampment, uh, for which we're coordinating county human health and, uh, services two to three times a week. Uh, our police visit daily. They know the campers by name, having friendly conversations and trying to keep peace. Our public works crews help them dump their trash in one area and pick them up once a week. As Cindy mentioned, the library has showers. Um, most of these folks have signed up for housing. There's simply not enough housing. Two of our former campers have been housed. I oppose criminalization of homelessness, camping bans, bans on sleeping in a car and sweeps. What usually happens is people lose their stuff and they move across the street. There's no easy answer. We need to create more affordable housing, acceptance of Section Eight housing vouchers. And I strongly support Housing First, but I also support more investment in shelters. With only two in the county, there's not enough. There's simply not enough permanent housing.
Thank you. And Chance?
Yes, um, I think it's, it's an interesting, uh, tie-in with the, the rental protection stuff because UCSF has just done a groundbreaking study last year that found the number one reason that folks are entering homelessness is because of rising rents and the inability to keep up. Uh, and sadly, it's seniors on fixed income, which are the largest demographic that are falling into homelessness. We have, uh, a lot of homeless folks in our community in, in the greater Ross Valley. It's not just folks in our park downtown. It's folks that volunteer at our very successful food pantry. It's folks that you see around town that you would never even know, but they might be living in their car or they might be homeless. Um, I'm, I'm proud that we've been able to coordinate to get a couple of, uh, our neighbors into housing who were even recalcitrant at the start. And it was building trust and helping them get the documents they needed that we were able to get those folks into housing and durable housing. So they're still housed or reunited with family. Uh, you know, we currently have the highest investment in case management in Marin County in Fairfax on a per capita basis. And the real solution to homelessness is just building more housing for folks. And that's what we've got to do, whether it's shelter beds or whether it's permanent supportive housing. And that's what I support.
Thank you, Chance. So moving on to question four, and we've touched on parts of this in previous questions, but it is Fairfax's new housing element outlines plans for up to five-hundred-ninety-eight new residences by 2031. What approach do you support to ensure these developments maintain the character of Fairfax while meeting the need for affordable housing? And Mike, we'll start with you. Please unmute.
Well, first of all, I don't think that, um, you should necessarily accept the numbers from the state. I do think, you know, I've always been pro-property rights. So I think, um, adding units, um, and, um, all that is important. I think growth is important, uh, on a, on the correct basis. Like I said, I, I, we all know about the Marin Town and Country Club. We can make the greatest thing happen there ever. Um, I proposed two things on the, uh, two, two proposals on the Marin Town and Country Club years ago. It has to go to the vote of the people, so we have to get something that they will like. Um, bottom line is five-hundred-eighty units is too much. Uh, this, there's towns that have pushed back on the state, have said that it's too many and they have used numbers, the state has used numbers that have been false and we shouldn't accept it. Uh, as a matter of fact, we should stick up for ourselves for our safety reasons, fire, police, infrastructure, all those reasons. We have to make sure it's the right thing. And once again, seven-story buildings, not going to happen if I can help it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And Doug, you're next.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, I, I agree with, um, Mike on that. Marin Town and Country is, is a logical place to put housing. Uh, also five-hundred-and-eighty is too many and also I have a history of working with, uh, Pat Eklund was, and I were written up in the IJ as having opposed ABAG and have successfully opposed ABAG and had it turn around. You know, again, why does San Francisco add zero residents? And, and small towns like, uh, Fairfax are expected to add so many more, you know? We do need to have more housing. It doesn't unnecessarily need to be in the suburbs. There's plenty of open space in this state where we can build a lot more housing for a lot, a lot of people and there could be good jobs and low-cost housing. Um, ADUs are fine in Fairfax. I think that's great. I think building seven-story buildings with no parking is going to destroy the character of this town and I don't think it's a good idea. Um, I'm in favor of building housing. I'm just not in favor of building too much and making this town unsafe. One road in, one road out. It's not a good idea to put too many in.
Thank you, Doug. Next is Cindy. Please unmute. Thanks.
So as a planning commissioner, I supported Victory Village, which is an affordable senior living project that went through many community meetings, um, to get to the end result. Also on the planning commission, I advocated for prohibiting, prohibiting short-term rentals on ADUs and JADUs in 2017, which was carried to the town council and approved before it was a state mandate. And this was to preserve housing stock. I think we need to look at how we can concentrate on affordable housing with deed restrictions. We've had some changes to our, um, ordinances that allow for clustered housing. We've got a workforce overlay for much- We've got a workforce overlay for much of the commercial downtown area, which is a little concerning in that it would allow a commercial building to be totally housing with no commerce. I support mixed-use developments down there because we want to keep our vibrant business community that serves the needs of the community.
Thanks, Cindy. And Bruce?
Well, I'll start with something that hasn't been addressed, that a lot of the concern that people express with regard to additional housing in Fairfax is traffic and parking. And I just want to point out that we have sixty thousand people that come into Marin every day to work here because they can't afford to live here, but they work here. Those people drive in, they drive back out, and they park during the day. If those same people were able to live in the community in which they work, it could actually decrease traffic and parking for those people. So there's really, there's two sides to this. These are all interlinked issues. The, we have, in Marin, we have glorious open space, as we all know. And we're not changing that. We have drawn boundaries around our town. Our general plan doesn't even consider increasing the boundaries of our town. We are in this spot and we just have to learn how to live in that spot. So that's, that's what we're facing. And I think
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Barbara?
Yeah, so talking about our housing element, one of the things we did, and I think we threaded the needle, and I just wanted to spell this rumor. The state is putting cities into receivership, no control. So this pushback to the state is a little disingenuous. We threaded the needle, I believe, to largely focus the housing away from the hills, in the flats, in the downtown areas, which will maintain more of our village-like quality. As, you know, not everybody wants to live in an ADU and somehow people think that's the answer. We did plan for a hundred and sixty ADUs and most of those were, would be affordable. And those are scattered throughout, and we provided streamlining and various other techniques to make those easier. We also did the workforce housing overlay in the commercial districts, which would allow a lot of buy-right housing. It's not going to displace a bunch of businesses, but we need folks to be able to live and work in town.
Thank you. And next is Chance?
Yeah, I greatly appreciate what Councilmember Ackerman actually brought up. It's the intersection of land use and housing policy, transportation policy, and the climate crisis. And the fact is that, you know, the fewer homes we have here, the decreasing population we're experiencing in Fairfax. We've seen hundreds of people leaving Fairfax since twenty sixteen. We're actually in a downward trend of population in Fairfax. But you wouldn't know because the parking spaces are full and our streets are clogged. And it's because everybody's driving here to work because they can't afford a home here. So it's all interconnected, and we did push back on the numbers. But we ultimately planned for the allocation that we received from, from the state with a little bit of a buffer because a number of these properties we have no control over. So one of the properties we identified has now become an art collective and it won't be housing. So we needed to have some wiggle room to make sure that housing can be planned in other parts to try to meet that number. So the state would certify our housing element. We wouldn't have the builder's remedy. We basically focused along the Sir Francis Drake Corridor, and we focused in our town core to make sure that people can walk and bike and they don't have to get in their cars and they don't have to clog our streets. Thanks.
Thank you. And Frank?
Preserving Fairfax's character. The current plan for high-rise buildings will fundamentally alter the character of our town. I've spoken with many of you, and I know how important Fairfax's charm and identity are to all of us. If we follow the state's one-size-fits-all mandate, we risk losing what makes this town special. I believe there's a better way to address housing needs while preserving Fairfax's unique character. A fresh voice with experience? I've spent years negotiating at state level with other regional agencies. I know how to make our case and push for creative solutions. The current town council is stuck on one answer, high-rise buildings. But I believe we need to think outside the box. My experience in navigating tough negotiations mean I can offer a fresh voice of experience, one that can explore all alternatives and advocate for Fairfax. There are other opportunities. We need to explore them. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. So question five involves Measure J, which would authorize eighteen million dollars in bonds for road and infrastructure repairs. Fairfax's poor county rating for road conditions adds urgency to this matter. Do you support this measure and why? And how would you ensure funds are used effectively to address Fairfax's infrastructure needs? This one, we're going to start with Doug.
Thank you very much. I don't support Measure J at this time. I don't think we should put out a bond measure. The interest rates are, are high. Yes, Fairfax has the lowest PCI in the county. As a member of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, I supported the San Onofre Road Measure. I voted for the San Onofre Road Measure before that, and I, we supported the Larkspur one. One of the things that this poll found was that it wasn't likely to pass, at least not with the two-thirds. We'll see what happens with Measure Five. And then also that the town residents weren't comfortable with the leadership. I think we may have to have a bond measure, but I don't think this is the right time, and I don't think this is the right measure. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. And next is Cindy.
So I do think we don't have the year-to-year funding to improve our roads. And again, our roads were one of the main concerns that the community vocalized. Having said that, this infrastructure bond addresses more than the road repair. I want to make sure that we prioritize the road repair aspect to this infrastructure bond and that we have a fully functioning and active citizens oversight committee, as we are not doing that now with our current Measure F Special Municipal Services tax, which funds in part our twenty-four-seven police station, which everybody supports. The Measure F was last renewed in November of twenty nineteen, and it has only had one citizens oversight committee meeting convened, and that was in May of twenty twenty-one. So we need to stand by what we put in the, or in the ballot measure.
Thank you. And Bruce, you're next.
So we have a, a bond for doing infrastructure, which is currently coming to its last. So that's going away at the same time as we now need a new bond. The reason we need it is because, I'll say that when I came on council, there was no Public Works Director. We now have an excellent Public Works Director with a very solid plan. And the, the way roads work, and we've gotten some great presentations on that on council, is that as they degrade, they get more expensive to fix. So it's just, we cannot keep up with the half-million-dollar-a-year budget on roads. We have to get ahead of this and fix them, as has been done in the past. So we'll just do it again. And the, the measure that, for the bond is Measure J absolutely calls for a citizens oversight committee that will be there. And the reason that the current oversight committee is not meeting is because there's nothing more to oversee. The money has been spent. So as the money is spent, that's when the oversight committee can take a look at it.
Thank you, Bruce. And Barbara?
Yeah, a couple of things. So absolutely, I support Measure J. I'm behind it. One of my big focuses is infrastructure, and I'm embarrassed that we're at this point. Fifty-two is our PCI. If we wait, and I initially wanted to wait, will be forty-five in a few years. And what that will do is then it will cost even more. What we did was, didn't poll as well as we expected, but we went for half the amount that we would need, eighteen million versus thirty-six million. And we had, we have a five-year plan, if it passes, to deal with almost forty-one percent of our major roads, arterials and key collectors. So it will only be spent on road repair, and I'm disturbed that people are saying it won't. We do have a citizens oversight committee, and we do have one for Measure F, and I've been on it for several years, and it's met more than once. So the plan is, we will have that. It's only for road repair, not for other projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. And Chance?
Yeah, when I got on council, we also did not have a public works director. And I was proud that one of the first things we did when I got on council was said, let's hire a public works director and let's create a pavement management plan, and let's figure out what our pavement condition is in Fairfax. Prior to that, there was a wait-and-see approach, and some folks still want that wait-and-see approach, which is going to leave us with deteriorating infrastructure that damages our cars, our bicycles, and endangers the safety of pedestrians and our children trying to get to school. So I refuse to let Fairfax fall further behind. I urge everyone to support Measure J. The overwhelming majority of folks in the poll supported an eighteen-million-dollar road bond, so we heard you. We put it on the ballot. We came up with a plan, and, and we can't afford to wait. Measure J replaces Fairfax's twenty-five-year-old expiring infrastructure bond that former council members Edgar and Gurengelli put on the ballot back in the nineties. At that time, they said the quality of our travel, commerce, and safety are at risk, and every season we wait multiplies expenses. Today, we say the same thing, and we need to invest in our roads. Thank you.
And Frank, you're next.
Measure J? No, I do not support it. I had asked the town council to wait until twenty twenty-six to put a bond measure on the ballot when interest rates are down. Fairfax takes in almost three million dollars a year for roads, gas tax, motor vehicle and lube, truck impact fees like the garbage trucks, and the county road tax measure gives about four hundred thousand dollars. Fairfax will pay twenty-two million dollars in interest to get eighteen million for roads. Doesn't make financial sense at all. Fairfax has mismanaged its revenue. Now is not the time to pay twenty-two million dollars to get eighteen million dollars for roads. We, we need to tighten our belt and we need to spend the revenue that we get for roads on roads, not on salaries. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. And next is Mike.
There we go. Okay. So forty million dollars to get eighteen million dollars. That's what's being proposed. It's a bad idea. Frank had mentioned we have millions of dollars that are earmarked for our roads right now. Guess where that money goes? The general fund. Very little of that money is used for the roads. Unfortunately, the same folks who did not take care of our roads for the last decade, who all seem to be proud of the fact that there was no Public Works Director, are the same folks you want to entrust your tax money to, to fix your roads now? I don't think so. Here's what I think. I think that a small businessman like myself can look at a budget and find money. Why are we spending a hundred five thousand dollars on a PR firm? Why are we spending five hundred fifty-two thousand dollars on our town attorney? There's so much money in the budget, not counting in addition to the money that we already have earmarked for roads. That's what we start with. If we need a bond measure down the road, that's fine. And by the way, twenty-five years ago, that's what we did. We spent the money wisely, but that's not what's happening now. Small business guys like me will spend the money wisely. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, moving on to question six. In a related question, bonds such as the one included in Measure J raise funds based upon the assessed value of an individual property. Due to the impact of Prop thirteen, longtime residents pay significantly less than newcomers. Would you advocate for a more equitable way to share costs? And we're going to start this with Cindy.
So I think Prop thirteen came about because of high taxes and high fees on property owners. And I haven't, and I don't think that we need to look at a different way to fund some of these things. I would continue to support our Prop thirteen. It's helpful for those that are older in our community that are on fixed incomes. So I don't know of a way to make that more equitable.
Thank you. Bruce?
Could I ask you to repeat that question? Because I think there were some parts to it.
Oh, sure. In a related question to the last one, bonds such as the one included in Measure J raise funds based upon the assessed value of an individual property. Due to the impact of Prop thirteen, longtime residents pay significantly less than newcomers. Would you advocate for a more equitable way to share costs?
Okay, thank you. Well, yes, I, I understand what you're asking and, but I think that is the way to do this at this point. It's the way these bonds are usually done because the people who own property are the ones who get the long-term benefit from a, a long-term investment, which is what this bond is. We're talking an investment that goes over twenty years, beyond twenty years, to improve our community, including improving property values. So that's, that's why bonds are usually done that way. And I think it's probably the equitable way to do it at this point.
Thank you. And Barbara?
Yeah, I, I support Prop thirteen as it is. But I also want to say one of the areas that's not equitable is Prop thirteen does not, needs to be really drilled down on commercial properties. I think we need to start assessing values on commercial properties at a higher rate. And that's where a lot of the inequity lies. You know, as Cindy or mentioned, you know, for people who bought a long time ago, most of us are aging on our homes and can't afford to start paying, you know, what the properties might be worth today. But upon a real estate transfer and inheritance, things change unless it's your primary residence. So I think it's working well, but I think the area it's not working well on is with commercial properties. And I know there have been ballot measures to try to change that that have been unsuccessful. And I would, I would propose that the state really look hard at that and start changing that significantly. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. And Chance?
I know it's really hard for new folks coming into the community. It's already a big lift to acquire property. And then to be straddled with or hit with, saddled with, excuse me, and hit with, you know, increasing property taxes as it relates to roads is, is tough. I get it. And I hear that when I walk door to door and talk to folks. And at the same time, I have to agree again with Councilmember Ackerman, you know, these are long-term investments, and these are things that actually bring value to our properties, to our businesses. That's why we need to continue to make the investments in them, and that's why Measure J is so critical because it actually brings down property values if, if we continue to let our infrastructure deteriorate and crumble, and it's going to cost everyone so much more in the long run. You know, Measure J is going to cost the average homeowner about sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents per month. It's going to cost a little bit more for a new person moving into our community. But what I'm committed to do is working with our partners at the regional and state and federal levels and getting those matching dollars to make it much easier to spend that money and, and get more work done with the limited dollars that we do have, because they're precious. I know they're precious.
Thank you. Okay, Frank, you're next.
Prop thirteen, I opposed Prop thirteen in nineteen seventy-eight. A number of us did. But it passed, and we learned to live with it. Overturning Prop thirteen now will drive our seniors out of town. We have a very large senior population in Fairfax. And huge tax increases will actually drive them out. The current median sales price at Fairfax is one million, three hundred thousand dollars. That bond measure will add about, let's see if I can quickly figure this out. It will add about a minimum of two hundred and forty dollars a year to the tax bill. You know, my alternative to that is to use the funds we get for the roads now and put off this, this Measure J, put off approving Measure J, and, and look for alternatives that don't have to go on the tax bill. Thank you.
Thanks. And Mike?
Okay, well, the way I'm going to look at it is, I'm going to save the taxpayers twenty-two million dollars. Okay, well, the way I'm going to look at it is I'm going to save the taxpayers $22 million. We are going to find the money and it's there. It's earmarked for the roads already. As far as Prop 13 goes, this whole thing about homelessness and displacing people, that's a no brainer. You've got to keep Prop 13. The town has turned over so many times since then, homes being turned over, being purchased by new people. And, and who benefits from that? The town, the town's never had, never received more tax dollars than now. And I'm very concerned about one of the thoughts about commercial buildings. I mean, I'm not, I don't understand that thought. Maybe I need to understand it better. But I know of a merchant who, the, 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 the property tax bill was $30,000 a year. The building turned over and guess what? It's now $60,000 a year. That sounds pretty high to me. So my point is you have to understand, I think, not just school or student economics, but you have to understand street economics. You have to understand that merchant, one second, that merchant is going to pass the cost of his goods on to the, his, his customers. Anyway, long story short, keep our prices lower. Save some money for our, our, our citizens.
And Doug?
Well, Prop 13 has saved people from being put out of their homes. I certainly would not support overturning Prop 13. And as far as changing it for commercial buildings, they're just going to pass the measures on and the rents are insanely high as it is. If people are interested in, in my views on tax measures as a member of the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, go to our website sensibletaxpayers.org and we have both bond tax criteria and other tax criteria. We favor more unit taxes, less parcel taxes. I would advise all the residents to be very, very, very careful about measure five, which will lower the threshold for new tax measures. We think there's a tax tsunami coming on this November, but it's going to be nothing like what's going to happen to the state of California if measure five passes. And people are going to see taxes every single solitary election and lots of them. We need to work within our means. Thank you.
Thanks Doug. We have so many good questions and so many more to ask, but we're, I'm going to ask our final question. Question seven. Measure H proposes converting the role of the town clerk from an elected position to one appointed by the town council. Do you support or oppose this change? And how do you think it will affect local governance and community representation? And we're going to begin with Bruce.
Well, I do support it, measure, that, that measure and the, which actually has been, similar things have been passed by 80% of the jurisdictions in the state. This is really a case of, as I said in my opening statement, things are a lot more complicated than they were in the, at the time that Fairfax was founded. And so we have, nobody can deny it. We have two positions really. The elected town clerk who has really no required qualifications. And then we have the person who really does the work, who's a full time paid professional. We've always had that. Our last town clerk did both of those. And now we have an elected town clerk who's not involved at all. And the, and then Christine Foster, who's doing all that work. So it's just kind of calling what is by, by the right name. I mean, this is what we have. Where, when we hire a town clerk, we should be able to look at their qualifications and get the right person. And they should be accountable to us to do the right job.
Thank you, Bruce. And Barbara?
Yeah, so in years past, going back to 1933, when the town was created, clerks had a really limited role. Those days are long gone. The demands on the office of the town clerk have risen significantly. Now remember, our town clerk is paid zero and there is no formal qualifications required and no real role, as we've seen since our town clerk retired, our elected town clerk. There's a number of things that we need to do. And what really happens, and Bruce mentioned this, is we have an elected town clerk who delegates everything to a paid professional staff. Because we have this requirement for elected town clerk, we're basically having an extra person that really has no responsibilities. And instead, we're unable to really look for qualified candidates that could come from outside. I know about that affordable housing. So being able to hire a professional clerk would be the best bet. It's not a power grab. And in fact, it's already what's happening with an additional person that's elected with no pay.
Thank you. And Chance?
Yeah, I, I support measure H as well. You know, I think there's some folks who don't want to have staff, don't want to invest in our infrastructure, you know, don't want professional staff to do jobs and want it to be volunteers and things. But frankly, I think Fairfax deserves to have good government, transparent government, accountable government, professional government. Like they deserve it. They deserve good services. And that requires having folks in those roles that have expertise. The role we have currently is predominantly done by a professional that we pay. And we would love to formalize that and make sure that that appointed clerk continues to do that job instead of having the confusing elected clerk that has no job description and doesn't actually participate in any functions in the town. I think the other thing that's noteworthy is as far as elections go, our Linda Roberts, our registrar of voters in Marin County is appointed. All of our elected things are appointed in that way. We defer to them. So 80% of the communities in California do this already. I think it's time that we continue to professionalize our, our roles formally in Fairfax. Thanks.
Thank you. And Frank?
The town manager and town attorney decided they wanted better control and have the town manager appoint a town clerk. The town clerk position in Fairfax has been elected since incorporated in 1931, 93 years ago. The qualifications to run for town clerk are the same as to run for town council. We've had great town clerks, Francis Lester Gay, Mary Hanson, Judy Anderson, and Michelle Gardner. It's worked. Fairfax decided to how to best implement this is by taking out any salary for a town clerk. Oh, they're merging the jobs or moving them around to make the town clerk position something no one would want to come in and do for nothing. The fact is, seven former mayors, one former council member, the mayors are Susan Brandberg, Peter Lex, Larry Bragman, Michael Gurengeli, Lou Tremaine, myself, and former councilman Ryan O'Neil all say no on H. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mike?
You know, I believe it's about having some independence, having, having better accountability, but having better transparency. The, the idea that, that we have a bloated budget in the town of Fairfax, which I just heard now, that's not a good thing. $552,000 for a town attorney, $105,000 for a PR firm to make things look good for the town. These are things that could be done by the department's heads. They can write their own little press releases. So I believe that it's a no on, on measure H. Fairfax is a small town. We've got to keep that character. It's just like having our own police department. Now, why should we have our own police department? We have it for accountability. We have it for uniqueness. So I say keep the town clerk. And I think that we need to know, you know, what's happening in town. We have too much power with the town manager and the town attorney. They work for us, not just for the town council.
Thank, thank you. And Doug?
Well, it's on the ballot, so let's see what the voters say. Generally, I've always worked with appointed clerks. I've never seen a clerk voted in. I've always been fortunate. There've been great, great clerks, San Seminole Town Council, Ross Valley Sanitary. And, and the town clerk left and we got her replacement and the new one's fantastic. Central Marine Sanitation, fantastic town clerk. She left. We got another one. She's fantastic. This is a professional job. I think in, back in 1933, the town clerk did have a lot of power. And you really wanted to know the town clerk. You'd hope that they were your cousin perhaps even, but the job's different now. But I'll leave it to the voters. Personally, I prefer an appointed town clerk. It's a professional job to me.
Thank you. And finally Cindy?
I'm going to leave it to the voters to decide on that. I think part of that comes from a sense of a, by the community of a comfort level in the town government and leadership. But I'm going to leave it to the voters to decide and we will go from there.
Thank you. So that concludes the question portion of the forum. And before the candidates make their closing statements, we want to share some key election information. Slide one, please. Here are some important dates. Ballots will be made mailed to all registered voters beginning on October 7th. Ballots can be returned by US mail at an official secure ballot drop box or at any vote center. Official ballot drop boxes will be available starting the next day. For in-person voting, vote centers replace assigned polling places. Voters may vote in person at any vote center in Marin. A complete list of locations is included in your voter information guide. All vote centers will be open at least four days before election day. November 5th is election day. Mail ballots must be postmarked by this date. Vote centers will be open until 8:00 PM. Ballots returned using the ballot drop box must be deposited by 8:00 PM. October 21st is the last date of register online, but after this date, you can still register, but only in person. Slide two, please. Here are the important dates in Spanish. Be sure to sign your ballot if you return it by mail or in a drop box. If you have questions, please reach out to Marin County's Elections Department in person, online or by phone. Slide three, please. There are many online resources for election information, including the league's website at MarinLWV.org. Another helpful League of Women Voters resource is Vote 411, an online tool that provides information about what's on your ballot. And I know you've all heard from me about this. All candidates are invited to enter their information. Voters can get a personalized list of candidates, including their biographies and top priorities and information about local ballot measures and more in English and in Spanish. Vote 411 replaces Voter's Edge, our previous online voter guide. I thank all of you candidates who have already posted their profiles on Vote411.org and I look forward to seeing the rest soon. Please visit Vote411.org. Thank you. And now the candidates will make closing statements of one minute each. We'll go in reverse order of the opening statements, starting with Cindy.
My professional experience has been in managing major IT programs and projects for the Army Corps of Engineers. So I have the skills of community engagement and consensus building and budget oversight. I know this community. I've lived here a long time. I've been a, I'm currently a planning commissioner since 2017 and I've been chair twice. I serve on the County Disaster Citizens Corps Council, representing our supervisory district. I'm a neighborhood fire wise leader. I'm on the Friends Board of the Great Fairfax Library, having led the funding effort for the new outdoor garden. I've also served on the town's volunteer board and Parks and Rec Commission. I'm proud of my endorsements, which include Supervisor Rice, former Fairfax council members and mayors, members of our Planning Commission and Open Space Committee, the former executive officer of the Fire Safe Marin, as well as a co-founder of Dark Sky West Marin, and many community members. And I'm honored to be, for some of them, their first endorsement. So I ask for your vote and my website is cindyswiftforfairfax.org. Thank you.
Thank you. And Doug, you're next.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum, for the other candidates for both running and for serving, both presently and in the past. I'm asking for your vote for town council. Yes, I'm new to Fairfax, but I've done this before and I've been on Ross Valley for now. This is my third term. I want to thank the voters of Fairfax who strongly supported me in my first run. I ran unopposed the other two. I actually prefer a competitive race. I want to look at the town finances. I want to look at where we're allocating our funds. As a businessman, I think I can do that well. I want to treat people compassionately. A woman with her child came upon my door in 2021 and I gave her and her child housing for free, which she needed. She had some relationship with my son many years ago for two and a half years. We need to worry about our neighbors. We need to be compassionate about our neighbors. And we need to love our neighbors, but we also need to make sure that we're taking care of them in a way that's compassionate and healthy. I hope you'll vote for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mike?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Running for town council again in 2024 was 28 years ago when I was first elected. You know, the Mikey Likes Fairfax campaign is a fun way of saying just how much I love this town, the people who live here and the folks who visit our town. From 1957, from the day I was born, my life has been an open book to the small, this small town. From attending our schools to working at the family restaurant business, to raising my family, to working hard every day to contribute to my family, friends, businesses and community. It's a wonderful life and I thank God for the blessings. My campaign pledge to you is to listen to you, to respect you, to be kind to you, to help make the best decisions possible in running our town properly. We're all in this together. We are all neighbors. Please vote for me, vote for Gurengeli, and I also recommend voting for Frank Egger. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. And Frank, you're next.
You're on mute, Frank.
Yeah, you're on mute.
The Fairfax Town Council and their attorney Janet Coulson allowed a conflict of interest to occur. Dyat and Basia was their contractor for the housing element and general plan update. Then Fairfax approved a programmatic EIR written by their contractor, Dyat and Basia, a clear conflict of interest. The purpose of an EIR is to find out exactly what's going on and the impact that's going to occur with the development that's going to occur. And we never were told the real truth. Former Assembly Member Mark Levine passed a state law with a density of, for Marin County, a rural of 20 units per acre. The Fairfax Town Council has approved 84 units per acre at School Street Plaza. I will bring before the town council a proposal to appoint a task force, task force of residents and merchants to follow Sauce Lita's lead to explore putting a ballot measure on to allow Fairfax voters to change from a general all town to a charter town, joining 121 charter cities in California. Charter city would give Fairfax the authority to elect this mayor rather than appointing one, handing it off to their favorite person. Charter cities have more local authority on zoning and housing issues. And charter cities have revenue opportunities that do not have to go on the property.
Thank you. Thanks Frank.
Thank you.
And Chance?
Yes. You know, I'm, I'm really proud to be among such esteemed folks. You have a lot of good choices. As your council member, Transportation Commissioner, Fire Board Director and Emergency Radio Authority Director, I've been proactive in my last four years and I've laid the groundwork to repair town infrastructure, expand sustainable transportation options, increase affordable housing opportunities, invest in our fire department, our police department, enhance climate resilience and open space protections like the wall property. Let's continue to build on this progress. With your support, I will continue to serve with openness and energy and integrity. I love Fairfax and I believe that the future is proactive. The future is teamwork. The future is collaboration with all of our partners in the county and beyond. And I think together, when we work together, we can tackle any challenge and nurture a vibrant and resilient Fairfax. And I'm so excited to work with you all to continue on that vision and on that journey.
Thank you, Chance. Barbara?
Yes, I'm deeply committed to public service, which is shown by my years of work with state and regional government and my years of volunteering for the town on the council and the open space committee and the planning commission. I love Fairfax and I believe I've shown that I have extraordinary skills, experience and background to continue to serve our community as a council member. I've accomplished quite a bit during my tenure on the council, but I'd like to continue to serve the people of Fairfax. There's much more to do. My experience could My experience, good judgment, and progressive approach will be needed over the coming years. I'm really happy to be here tonight and I'd love your vote. Other news, disaster prep. On Saturday, we held our first all-town-wide evacuation drill, which I called for as mayor. A hundred and ninety-two people, eighty-eight cars, five dogs, and two cats participated. We need to hold these annually and my website is barborcoler.org. And thank you very much for the opportunity to participate and I'd love to have your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. And finally, last but not least, Bruce.
Thank you to the League and to the Fairfax Chamber. This has been a respectful and helpful discussion. I invite voters to look at my website, BruceAckerman for Fairfax dot com for more on the issues and also some deeper dives that you might find inspiring on things like the energy transmission and the pavilion project. And endorsements by the firefighters, the Sierra Club, the Marin I J, Three Fifty Marin Action, the Young Democrats, the North Bay Labor Council, and many fellow elected officials starting from our county supervisors and citizens. And you can contact me through that website if you have any, if you'd like to, to speak. And if I don't, meet you at your door, which is what I'm doing every day at this point. I ask for your vote to continue serving Fairfax and Marin.
Thanks, Bruce. So that wraps it up for us. Thank you to all the candidates for participating in this evening's event, to the League Forum team, and to the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce for partnering with us on this forum. Special thanks to our Spanish interpreters and to our friends at Community Media Center of Marin for their technical support. And a big thank you to members of the community who submitted questions for the candidates. A video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next few days. Thank you again for joining us this evening and most important, thank you for voting.
Thank you.